Santa Claus works for Ardua? That's where he's been hiding out at? Supposed to be in North Pole, man. What a bum. Makes you wonder how many undocumented elves he has working up there. Okay, since I've been gone for two months, alright, I got this. Yeah, trying to make my keep. Uh, you know, it's pumping, it's pumping. It's just, uh... I am, I am. I just, right now, I feel like the problem with the school system in general is the problem with the school system in the country. And it's, we don't put enough focus onto it. Shortage of funds, not enough pay for the teachers, which, all the, you know, I've already seen, in the six measly years I've been teaching, I've already seen some fantastic teachers take jobs elsewhere, you know, to make more money. And that's, and I'm, I'm in the reverse of that. I was already working all those other jobs, and I found teaching to be something that fits my lifestyle a lot more comfortably. But I'm seeing some fantastic teachers leave, and it's, that's the bottom line, you know, is, is what we have to deal with, worth it for the financial gain. And some teachers weigh it out as not being it, you know, like, the mental wear and tear as a teacher, that you, you know, you don't, that's the one thing I didn't realize I was gonna run into, how much, what happens in the classroom doesn't leave you when you go home, you know, if you run into any situation where-
I just found with you, I had so many, and some of them weren't where they wanted, that I had enough names to fill everything.
Right. Didn't we have one more for CT? Who was that?
I don't know.
Oh, I think we had two in the same... But yeah, I mean, you hear a story that a kid tells you, that, from something that happened at home, and it does not leave you, you know, like, sometimes it almost haunts you. Oh, we don't have a city manager, or Sergio, or nothing, huh?
So we'll start with-
You wanna go?
We'll start with the airport authority.
Okay.
When we start at airport and go down?
Yeah, if you want to.
Let's do that for the airport first.
Is airport, that's at the top for you, huh?
Yeah, I'm going in you there.
Yeah. It was, and then I refresh it, utilities at the top, so. I'm, I'm there, I'm at airport though.
We can do whatever you want, Kim.
That's true, it won't take long.
Mine says airport utilities, initial authority-
Maybe.
Sweet.
Mine's not gonna load, probably. Does it say December 12?
You what?
Does it say December 12?
Yeah.
We'll start with, so I say airport authority?
Yeah, his does, his does, mine does. Is yours not loading?
No.
Are you having trouble?
It'll load. I'll look off a lint.
Really?
Do we have a computer guy?
It's okay, I can look off. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, everybody, I'd like to get started, we're running a little bit late, but things kinda hectic tonight.
Can you hear us? Oh, you can hear me.
Can you hear me? Can you, can you hear me? Okay, alright. So we're gonna call this meeting to order, and I'd like to first invite Pastor John Henry of the New Life Christian Center to come up and give our invocation.
Dear Lord, we come before you, Lord, we just ask for wisdom. We ask, Lord, that your truth. Lord, for compassion. Lord, I just ask that you be with this council, with all these men and women, that you just guide them, that you direct them, that you help them to make the very best decisions. And, Lord, we just ask that you have your hand on each and every person that's here, and watch over them. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Mr. Setzer, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll call this the meeting, special meeting of the Guyman Airport Authority, I'll call it to order. Uh, agenda item number two is attendance roll call and determination of a quorum.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Alvedres? Mr. Setzer?
Present.
Mrs. Sanchez?
Here.
Mr. Idson?
Here.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Shannon? We have a quorum there.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Shannon's under the weather, so he can be with us tonight, so, uh, we're hoping he'll have a speedy recovery. Agenda item number three is approve the minutes of the special meeting of October 10th, 2023.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for October 10th?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedres? Setzer?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Agenda item four is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 23-01, a resolution of the trustees of the Guyman Airport Authority of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, establishing an investment policy for the Guyman Airport Authority. Resolution is attached. This is something we do every year.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 2301, a resolution of the trustees of the Guyman Airport Authority of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, establishing an investment policy for the Oklahoma Airport Authority.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to approve airport leases for 2024. The list is attached. And again, this is, we do this every year.
I make a motion, we approve airport leases for 2024?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Agenda item number six is public comments, do you have any public comments at this time? We'll do this later on in the meeting, if you wanna wait, if you have any. Okay. We will dispense with agenda item number seven, reports from city manager and council meetings, we'll move that to the last item on the agenda. With that, we'll stand adjourned as the Guyman Airport Authority, and we reconvene as... Which one, Josh?
You wanna go to utilities?
That'd be good, Guyman Utility Authority. If it'll load. Everybody good? Okay, call this meeting to order, the Guyman Utilities Authority. We've done the agenda item number two, the attendance roll call. Agenda item number three is approve, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 14th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for November 14th, 2023?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number five... Is that right?
Four.
Four, I got lost. This, agenda item number four is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 23-03, a resolution of the trustees of the Guyman Utilities Authority of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, establishing an investment prop, policy for the Guyman Utilities Authority.
I make a motion, we approve resolution number 2303, a resolution of the trustees of the Guyman Utilities Authority of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, establishing an investment policy for the Guyman Utilities Authority.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to approve the contract between the Guyman Utilities Authority and Ardua for the new water well field project. And we have two representatives from Ardua, and we'll let the, we will let the brains talk first, and then we'll go to the second guy.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Uh, my name is Crystal Kowalik, and, uh, presentation's kind of, I can hold it in front of you. Um, uh, my name's Crystal Kowalik, I'm an engineer with the Ardua Engineering Firm. We have, um, you're about to find out why I'm an engineer and not a public speaker, so please forgive me. So, next slide. So, a quick summary of the work that we've already done for you, contract that was already to you and completed was the work where we did an electric, electrical resistivity imaging of approximately 640 acres, and we discovered some possible locations of water for you. And also in that report, we had selected possible seven sites for future wells. Uh, we've also, in the work that we've done, has gotten a right of entry, and with Mike Shannon's help, we've extended that right of entry, so we can continue on to the next phase. Go to the next slide. In that next page, it's kind of a map of the area and approximate location of those seven wells. The red ones are the ones that we feel have the most potential. Um, the yellow ones are the next on the list, and then the blue one is, um, kind of a little bit of a... To make sure that, uh, we have all the right location shows of the very far distance, so we'll, I'll talk about that a little bit more on the next slide. So, um, science is about knowing, and engineering is about doing. Now, we've done the science part, we have found where we believe are the locations, and now this is kind of where the engineering begins. We have assembled a group of people that have over combined 150 years of experience. I threw Santa Claus in the picture to let you know that he is also on our team. Uh, but, his name's John, and he's actually been an engineer for over 40 years. So, the next slide. So, the first part of this project is gonna be the most important. We're gonna do several things in it. Uh, kickoff meeting, where we're gonna get with a lot of your city staff, Tracy, Matt, Mike, we're gonna sit down and talk about a lot of the issues, gather a lot of data, and really begin the, the bulk of this project. Also, in this first phase, we're gonna do aquifer modeling, and when this is done, we're gonna be able to tell you how long we actually think we're gonna get out, uh, useful life out of this well site. So we're, you know, it's hard to tell you right now, 30, 40, 50 years, but we'll be able to know that at the end of that first part of the project. Uh, we're also gonna be doing some surveying, that will be just in that land commission, uh, site area, and we're gonna be doing confirmation of the test hole drilling. So with that, we are going to determine the quality of water, and at the depths that we're gonna establish, and when we know that with the modeling, we will be able to give you even more information with that. Um, and then we are gonna, we are working with Mike Shannon to also, um, finalize getting the water rights for that area. And that is a big, that, that is the key to this project and moving forward. So, on the next slide, in this contract is also phase two, and it's hard to talk about all these lines in succession, because they are gonna be constantly overlapping each other, because we're trying to get water to you guys as fast as possible. So, I, um, we're gonna be doing surveying for the transmission lines, possible sites for water towers, booster stations, whatever's needing as design goes, and figuring that out. Uh, because of the kind of funding that you guys are gonna be getting, there's gonna need to be an evaluation, an environmental and cultural evaluation done. And, uh, that's just, you know, checking for, um, architectural artifacts, um, endangered species, stuff like that, and that helps secure the loan and keep that going forward. Uh, at the same time, we're gonna be doing an evaluation of the existing water system, so we're identifying, where exactly do we need to tie the water into, um, how it needs to be treated, and all those things moving forward. And so, we're looking at it as a holistic system, not just the piece of the, the well site bringing it to town. It's really making it work together as a cohesive unit. We, um, gonna be doing all the permitting, all the designing, all the bidding, and as I say, we're gonna be doing a lot of these together at the same time, so we're gonna be pushing it forward as fast as possible. Um, and then, of course, at the very end, it will be a construction inspection, and then the startup, to make sure everything is working well. So this is a really unique project, in the fact that, um, this kind of only happened once in a lifetime, really, because this is the kind of, a project that's gonna sustain you for many, many years. Um, if things go as we hope, with all these overlapping pieces and nothing pushes out too far, we hope to have water to you guys by the end of '25, beginning '26, for anything. And with that being said, I'll answer any questions, if you guys have.
Um, what was that blue location on the map that you were talking about?
So, it is another possible test hole site, but, um, also to look for any intrusions of other materials that might compromise, uh, compromise the water.
And you're gonna drill at all seven of those sites to test them?
We are going to be figuring that out as we go along. Um, right now, the answer is yes, we put in the contract to do all seven, but if there is ability to cut that back, like, if we find the first three or four sites have very, a large quantity with a lot of water, then we might not do the additional sites, be able to save Guyman some money. It just depends on how, as things progress and we move along, um, how that'll play out.
Uh, based on all the expert opinions that you guys have on staff, how, what, what, can you give an estimated amount of years that we're looking at here, for sustainability?
It's really hard to estimate that right now, until the modeling is done.
Right.
But we are pretty confident that there is a substantial amount of water. The saturation thickness that was shown to you last time, what we were here giving a presentation, is really thick. So, um, we feel pretty confident that you've got good supply there. So, the aquifer modeling will determine years, but that also allows you build wells, and you know how much they can produce, the drawdown of those wells will also help determine the year. So until we have a little bit more of that data, we'll, we'll be able to understand that final answer a little bit more.
Right.
You have other questions?
Nope. I make a motion that we approve the contract between Guyman Utilities Authority and Ardua for the new water well field project.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number six, discussion and possible action to approve application for payment number three for Caldwell Tanks Incorporated, in the amount of $271,375.33 for the 300,000 gallon elevated water storage tank project. The application and the engineer's update is attached.
I make a motion that we approve the application for payment number three of the Caldwell Tanks Incorporated, in the amount of $271,375.33 for the 300,000 gallon elevated stor, water storage tank project.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action to approve application for payment number four for Gates Utilities LLC, in the amount of $235,208.60 for the Northeast Ground Storage Tank Project. That'll be out by the industrial park, they've got it built, they just need to paint it. Coming right along.
I make a motion to approve application for payment number four for Gates Utilities LLC, in the amount of $235,208.60 for the Northeast Ground Storage Tank Project.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action to authorize the city managers to advertise for bids for one new and unused 450 or 4500 regular cab truck, and one new and unused 650 or 6500 regular cab truck for the sanitation department. These are, were in last year's budget.
And the, these are the trucks that we've also been having trouble getting, because-
Chips?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve, or authorize the city manager to advertise for bids for one new and used 450 or 4500 regular cab truck, and one new and unused 650 or 6500 regular cab truck for the sanitation department.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
We have no new business. Uh, agenda item number 10 is public comments, we'll move that to the end of the Guyman, City of Guyman. So, we're at the Industrial Authority. Everybody there? Okay, I'll call this meeting, the Guyman Industrial Authority, to order. Uh, agenda item number three, we've already done two, is approve the minutes of the special meeting of the December 13th, 2022 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting of December 13th, 2022?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2301, a resolution of the trustees of the Guyman Industrial Authority of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, establishing an investment policy for the Guyman Industrial Authority. Resolution is attached.
Okay, I make a motion to approve resolution number 2301, a resolution of the trustees of the Guyman Industrial Authority to, of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, establishing an investment policy for the Guyman Industrial Authority.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
And again, we'll move the public comments to the, this meeting, the Guyman City Council meeting, we have no new business, so we will... Business, oh, we're gonna do the Guyman City Council. My mind's working too fast, I guess, or too slow.
We'll go with fast.
If it'll load. Okay. Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Uh, we've done agenda item number two, the attendance roll call. Agenda item number three is approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve item number three, the consent agenda?
I second that.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action to enter into a public hearing in order to take public input on the FY fiscal year 2024 proposed budget. Do I have any comments or questions at this time, on our budget? I might make an, make an add, add that, uh, the budget closely mirrors what we have done in the last two years. Uh, we've had to make some adjustments because of, of the, or what we think that will be the income of the city next year, that there was a little, few slight adjustments, but anyway, so, does anybody have any question, any comments on the budget, or the budget process? Okay. Agenda item number five is discussion of the, of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2024. Anybody have any questions? Everybody got a chance to look at it, did you all do? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Um, we can't-
Oh, that's not, that's the next one.
Yeah.
That's right, I'm sorry. Okay. Agenda item number six is, is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 23-21, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, adopting the operating budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024, and authorizing budget transfers. Resolution is attached. Comments, discussion, motion?
I make a motion, we approve resolution number 2321, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, adopting the operating budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024, and authorizing budget transfers.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 23-22, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, establishing an investment policy for the City of Guyman.
I make a motion, we approve resolution number 2322, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, establishing an investment policy for the City of Guyman.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action to approve invoice number 25-4453337, in the amount of $75,958.19 to Tyler Technologies for the annual support and software maintenance fees for our software.
I make a motion to approve invoice number 025-445337, in the amount of $75,958.19 to Tyler Technologies for annual support and software maintenance fees.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to approve Oklahoma Public Transit revolving fund agreement between the Oklahoma Department of Transportation and then City of Guyman for the 2024 operating funds. Again, this, we do this every year.
Mm-hmm. I make a motion to approve Oklahoma Public Transit revolving fund agreement between the Oklahoma Department of Transportation and the City of Guyman for 2024 operating funds.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion and possible action to approve increasing golf course fees by 5% effective January 1st, 2024. And a list of those fees are attached, plus the proposed increase. I think it's about a 5% across the board, I believe.
Yeah.
Is that right?
I think so.
Okay. Any questions, comments, discussion?
I make a motion, we approve the increasing of the golf course fees by 5% effective January 1st, 2024.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number 11 is discussion and possible action to approve order of determination for Lot 20, Lot 21, in the south 27 feet of Lot 22, Block 37, Stonebreaker Zia addition to the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, also known as 1415 North Academy. And there's some staff report and documentation and pictures that is attached.
Hi, so, this is just another one of our cases that we've tried reaching out to the Hi, so this is just another one of our cases that we've tried reaching out to the property owners. Previously, this case was actually under a different address because the lots were split differently, so I have had contact with the owner. Owner is an older gentleman. He wouldn't really want to cooperate with me on doing the work. He's really tied up for time, so I would post on the property, try to contact him, but to no avail, would have contact with the owner about progress being done on the property, so we would like to, we recommend to approve order of determination, we'd like to start the bid process, estimated about $2,000, the work to be completed from February 14th through February 21st, 2024.
All right. Discussion, questions, motion?
I make a motion, we approve the order of determination for Lot 20, Lot 21, in the south 27 feet of Lot 22, Block 37, Stonebreaker Zia addition to the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, AKA 1415 North Academy.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Sessler?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item 12 is discussion and possible action to award bid to JRC Construction for weeds and trash abatement located at Lot 1 and Lot 2, Block 21 of the Latham addition, also known as 902 South Cremly, Guyman, Oklahoma. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, so we took this to council for order of termination back in October, and we followed our procedure. And yeah, so we're just ready to approve the bidder. JRC was the only company that approved, I mean, that, you know, had all of the, I mean, all of the insurance that was needed and all of that stuff. So they did a bid for $3,450 for the cleanup at 902 South Cremly, and if we get this approved, they can start tomorrow.
Good.
Any questions?
I make a motion to award the bid to JRC Construction for weeds and trash abatement located at Lot 1 and 2, Block 21, Latham addition, AKA 902 South Cremly, Guyman, Oklahoma.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Sessler?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number 13 is discussion and possible action to change the permanent time of the Convention and Tourism Board meetings to 6:00 PM on the third Thursday every month. I think they were having issues with getting a quorum at the noon time.
Yeah, it's about time.
So that's the reason behind it, and we have to give a list of the meeting times for our board members by January 1. Questions, motion?
I gladly make a motion to change the permanent time of the Convention and Tourism Board meetings to 6:00 PM, the third Thursday of every month.
A second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Sessler?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number 16, wait, 14, moved it around wrong. Discussion and possible action to appoint or reappoint members of various boards and commissions whose terms expire December 31, 2023. I sat down with some of the staff and the other, anyway, we took the applications plus the people that are already on the deal, and we, I put together a list, I passed it out to everybody, so I'm going to read the list now. We had just as many applications as we had openings. Some of them, some of the, some of the openings, there were more people wanting to be on there than we had positions, so we went through them and kind of picked everybody out, and the ones that were extras or whatever, we put you on some, maybe not, may not be the board you'd like to serve on, so this will all be subject to your approval or these people's approval and acceptance of that position. And if we get into that, then we'll, we'll work out that, we'll work out the feeling of it if you don't want to be on one. So I'll start out with Arts and Humanities. We had, I think, three positions. Is that right, Levona?
Uh-huh.
Three positions on it, and, well, wait, let's back up to Airport Board, that's the first one. We had two positions, both, both these gentlemen have been on the board and, and would like to continue on that board, Dakota Ray and Matt Johnson. So do we want, do we want to take them individually, by board, or all of them? What's your, what's your, Geraldine?
We can do together.
All of them together?
Yeah.
Okay. Arts and Humanities, Nildo, Jesus, Martel, Deidre Harvest and Humphries, and Chek Krone. Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustments, Tim Yngst wanted to remain on the board, Will Lackey filed an application of intent. Golf Board, Bob Fagin's on the board, he wants to remain. Gilberto Barrera would be a new member, Corey Winter wants to stay on the board, Jamie Kaufman wants to stay on the board, they're long-term serving members. Convention and Tourism, Vanessa Carrasco. Cemetery, Carson Kane and Chris Perkins both expressed an intention and desire. And Library Board, Maria Stuklich, and I sure butchered your names, so my apologies. So, and again, this is subject to acceptance by the people on this name. We couldn't get everybody exactly maybe where they wanted to be.
And the Parks Board.
Oh, yeah.
Parks Board, oh, over on the side, I'm sorry. Parks Board is Jared Garrison. So that's kind of where we're at, if that's acceptable to councilmen? I might remind you that boards and commissions serve at the leisure of the council. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Sir, can I speak?
You can.
Please do.
Did, did I mess up?
No, I am not sure if we have, if you and I are on the same page with, let's see, I've got Cemetery has several more than you mentioned.
The list I had showed two.
And. Now, do you want to?
Excuse me. Are you, this the same list that Levona gave us?
Yeah, probably.
Okay, so Airport was two, Arts and Humanities was three, Board of Adjustments and Planning was two.
See over here in the purple?
Uh-huh.
That has all of the applicants, all of the applicants.
Okay. Well, I just took it off of the list, the papers that were given to me.
You just chose two of those.
Huh?
Okay. All of these, though, on the left are the applications received.
Okay.
And then over here says the openings that we have.
Yes, I know. We had some people that had applied for more than one place, so this, basically what we did was, you get one board.
Okay.
This was with the discussion that, that Mr. Shannon and I had and whatever. Okay? All right. We, in other words, everybody that I had a printed application on, except for one, is on a board.
They're on there somewhere, okay.
On there somewhere.
Okay.
So if you don't like, and if you don't like what you, what the board you're appointed to, let us know, we'll work something out. So. And y'all can look it over and take some time.
Yeah, as far as what I see, there's no applicant left unappointed, right?
Right.
Right.
Yeah, and that's what we want.
Right.
And we don't want to over, we don't want to over, over apply on, on boards, so we don't want like one person on the, on multitude of boards.
The thought is, the thought is to get more people involved.
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to.
Yes, ma'am.
And I appreciate the appointment to Arts and Humanities, but I applied to CNT, and the person who also applied to CNT, applied to six other boards, and so I see that she can, you know, she might enjoy being on Arts and Humanities, but I just wanted CNT, so just wanted to point that out.
We, we go through this every year, and basically what we did was sit down and try to kind of fill them, move some people around, mainly give everybody the chance to have the experience of being on. So if you don't want to be on that board, fine, we'll, the one you applied for, we can work something out down the road, and maybe next year you can get on the other.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll make a motion to appoint or reappoint, in some cases, members of various boards and commissions whose terms have expired December 31, 2023. Should I, do I need to go ahead and list all these names now?
You've got that, Levona?
I got it.
Okay.
Okay.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Sessler?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
All right. We have no new business. Agenda item number 16 is public comments. Anybody have any public comments they'd like to make? We've got three minutes at the states. Josh will be our timekeeper if anybody wants to address us. Anybody with public comments? Public comments. Agenda item number 17 is possible executive session to evaluate the interim city manager and contract renewal pursuant to 25 Oklahoma statutes, 2011, subsection 307B1. Do I have, do I have a motion?
Do, should we, should we table that till we get everyone here, or do we kind of need to make a motion on this?
Well, we, we renew his contract January 1.
Yeah.
So whatever, whatever your leisure is, if we don't want to do that, we can, or we can meet tonight and talk about it and decide whether you want to renew it. Crap. What do you think, Jason? We just, we need a motion to go into it, or else we can take?
I'll motion that we go into an executive session.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to go into.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Sessler?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Okay, we'll be back. Okay, we'll be back. We're finished our agenda, if nothing else, okay? Okay, we need a motion to come back in the executive, uh, come back into regular session.
I make a motion to enter back into regular session?
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Mine died.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so, come back in the executive session. Agenda Item Number 10 is Proposed Action of Renewal the City Manager's Contract.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. He's got it on a little bitty print over there, I can see it. No, Josh didn't have to...
I'm always testing my eyes. I make a motion to renew the interim city manager's contract.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Okay. We did, we did public audits. So, thank you all for attending, we stand adjourned. You did a good work, man.
Off to another.